Okay, let's open the January 20th, no, February 14th. Oh, boy. Meeting of the Rutland Planning Board. First agenda item is minutes of January 24th.
Make a motion to accept, as written.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Everybody ready? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have A and R. Proposal at 57 Maple Ave. And...
I'm here on behalf of Mr. Ames.
This could be interesting.
Yes. I was struggling with this one, so I don't need a lot of explanation.
I've already made up my mind.
So, what we got here is...
Sorry to interrupt, can you just identify yourself on the record?
Yeah, Michael Boitrueva, I'm here on behalf of Mr. Ames with New Land Design.
Great, thank you.
And what we got here is a A and R plan for four lots.
Excuse me, would you like going over to the big board and pointing this stuff out?
Sure.
Because I...
Sure.
...would lead me back, please?
Yes. This one?
Yeah.
And what we're proposing is to separate the two houses that fall within the piece of land. The entirety of the piece of land is this. And there's a private road going through the middle of it, and there's a home here and a home here existing. And what we're proposing is to separate these homes. And as you can see, there's Lot 1 for this home. Lot 2, Lot 3 are additional lots, and Lot 4 is an existing home as well.
So Lot 2 and 3 are the new ones?
I suppose that would be...
I mean, you're breaking them up, but Lot 2 and 3 would be the two new undeveloped lots.
Two new undeveloped lots, correct.
Yeah, okay.
And the land on the bottom would take up all the land on your little lot?
This land here, yeah.
That's the original Bigelow house right there.
Yeah. So, I'm struggling with the private road.
That's correct, that is not a regular road, therefore should go to either town council for determination, because I do not believe... And how is the deed written?
Yeah, that's what I was struggling with when I looked this over. I was... Because there's a cul-de-sac on the other side, so...
Which was put in, you know, some other time.
Yeah, yeah, Lantern or Lantern Lane.
Not... I believe the cul-de-sac was not that long ago, as compared to this thing here. This was only a...
I don't think that road is depicted on Rutland maps, is it?
No.
No.
I don't believe so. But it's a private road in existence prior to zoning.
Okay. But, was it a road at the time, or was it for the sewer line?
Well, there's a... Yeah, because there's a...
The sewer line doesn't follow the road exactly, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
Correct, yes.
But...
The line here, road here.
But, has anybody ever talked to any of the older people that were in the sewer department?
No, and my struggle was, it's on the map that I was looking at, it was called Existing Private Way, Lantern Lane, but the cul-de-sac ends as Lantern Lane in a cul-de-sac, so that's why I was struggling with, okay, I don't know the legalities of this one, this isn't of my knowledge base, so I was going to ask the board on this one.
Yeah, no, I feel that it needs to go to town council to get a review, because I feel that, like you do, Tim, that it's not.
And beyond that, Lot 3...
Yeah.
Is not in the TC district.
I...
TC district only goes 200 feet from Maple Ave.
Where does that come from? That's...
Oh...
I know we were sent a form.
Did you put that in the packet?
I did put that in the packet.
Yeah.
Right. Also, where does that come from? That comes from the rezoning of the district.
Okay.
In 2010, as part of the recommendation to rezone, some of that land from its prior zoning to TC, there were several parcels created. There was parcels created for TC 2 and TC 1. The excerpt that you have, the excerpt that was sent to you is for the TC 1 area that pertains to Maple Street.
And that's page 2 of 9 there?
Yeah, and this property specifically, and I believe that's where Ms. Anderson was getting the 200 feet from Maple.
And is that... I couldn't find that in the zoning bylaw.
It should be under the county center zoning bylaw.
Well, none of the...
Yeah, okay, okay. That description is not in the zone. That description was a part of the warrant article that was passed, creating it.
Okay.
It is of record.
Yeah. Which, putting it bluntly, I'm going to toot my own horn, I wrote that. I wrote that whole thing. And it took some time.
One description I did see where it was on this, you know how there's on, going up Maple Ave, there's one lot that sticks beyond the rest?
Yeah.
That is not called out in this description.
Okay, I think, okay, that's interesting to know. I think for the purposes of this, what used to be called out is, pertains to this lot. That's interesting to know.
So that was called out, that was in the new town warrant?
Yeah.
So that being said, the line...
This doesn't depict the TC 1 line, does it? That's one thing I didn't see in here.
Correct. I have it kind of sketched here for my own use.
Okay.
This is where it would fall as far as the TC line. You're allowed to go 30 feet beyond it with a lot that's...
Partially in it.
That's partially in that zone.
Yeah.
So theoretically, the 30 feet would extend...
I don't...
This is the 30-foot mark from here, is these two dots. I didn't draw the line across.
I don't think any part of Lot 3 is in it. If you look at the line right there, you're way over 200 feet.
From here, I believe a segment of it would be right here. That being said...
It's close, because it's 141 for the side lot, that first lot, and then another 36 feet, so there's only about three or four feet of that Lot 3 that's in it, and that, if I'm doing my math right, I'm sorry, I didn't train up to you.
I see 170 plus 28 plus 32.
Well, that's 141.
Hmm? This says 170.
Oh, okay. So now I am confused. I think the 170 norm goes up to that corner right there.
Okay, it could be.
But still, if you add 32 to 170, that's 200. And that doesn't, if you do the math between this guy and this guy, that'd be 170. So, yeah, you're right. And then another 32 would be 202, up to that line right there.
Which, that line is slanted a little bit back towards Maple Ave.
This would be...
Yeah.
This right here is the approximate, I mean, approximate, I just scaled it, but that's...
Yeah, yeah.
That would be the zone line there. And then this was something I had earlier.
Yep, so, half the house.
And you're allowed to go 30 feet beyond that. I gotta do that right. Where'd that came from? January, something like that. And you're allowed to go another 30 feet beyond that in a zone that's partially...
See, I could be lenient with Lot 4. Lot 3, I just don't see the leniency. But again, I think before we even get to that point, we've got to get the town, somebody get the legality to tell us about this road.
I guess compared to Cool Sandy Beach, Devon Pond Row, there's several private roads in town like this. There's obviously a house here and here. That's all, I just thought it'd bring to the table.
As I've said over the years, where is our certified list of roads?
Yeah.
Well, this is definitely not on it.
Yeah.
And when was it? Like I say, is it in the deeds? Is it listed as such in the deeds?
The other thing along the town council, I guess I'd like to pass on, Dave, or this would be a question that I guess I'd send to Joe. Is this one of his private roads that he plows? Because that would give us a little bit more, because he's got a list of roads that he plows that are private.
I don't believe this is one of them, but I could be wrong. There's also...
Actually, I know the answer to this, if you don't mind. This is not a road that is actually plowed. We did research that question.
Okay.
And we found out that it ends, this right-of-way is not part of that.
Okay.
Right? And when you look there, I remember that was, so thank you.
Okay. Well, that, again, that backs me up to, I really want to get an opinion from KP on this one. It's my opinion, or...
KP, yeah, or, you got or.
Or KP, the guy who's left KP that starts, which the select board hasn't approved yet or thought done with.
And I would note that there would be, I mean, there is a benefit to these homes to keep this open, to allow secondary access to the old trailer park.
But then, is the other road a town road also, or is that also private?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Because of, you know, that was the mobile homes and all that, I don't know if that was set up different than the rest?
Again, I think our question should be, because to your point, if Lantern Lane cul-de-sac is an opportunity to tie it together with this road to have secondary access, the town standard, I'm okay with that.
Then this, no, then this road has to be brought up to, no.
I get that, yeah, but I just want to hear, again, asked, my opinion would be asked the attorney, is Lantern Lane existing cul-de-sac a private road? And then what do we do about this road? Give us some opinion on that. And then, if there is an opportunity that they say yes, you could tie these two together and turn that into a town road, so to speak, then I'm, then there's a benefit to the town on that.
Yeah.
And then I'm more apt to do that, but to your point, it's got to be town road standard, not private standard, so...
Is, I mean, is Cool Sandy Beach and Devon Pond Row town standard, or those are private roads?
Yeah, but they're listed in the town, if I'm not mistaken, they are listed...
But if this road existed prior to zoning?
Is it listed in the town prior to zoning? Cool Sandy Beach's roads are, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't know if that's the rule.
That's why I asked for certified.
Then, again, that's where we need an attorney to tell us that.
Actually, if I could just offer something to maybe help here, we did ask the applicant if they could tell us, if they knew when this right-of-way was created. We didn't hear anything back, so I think if we could get information from you folks in terms of what you know about the right-of-way, that would be helpful, because then we would feed that to town council, because they're going to want to know, when was it created? What's the representation of when it was created?
Okay.
I'm not sure we know on this side. I think if the applicant has the A and R, it might be to their best interest to try to find that answer.
And then we'd have information for the attorney, if they could rule on it.
Right. And read the deed and find out if it's in the deed. I was going to say, if it is a right-of-way, it has to be in the deed.
That's right.
So whatever you could find would be helpful. And does Lantern Lane figure into this at all, the rest of it, the cul-de-sac?
I guess what I would probably, and this isn't you guys' responsibility, I'd want to find out from either Joe or Anita, is Lantern Lane a private way, or is it a town road?
Why don't...
And they do appear to connect this term.
Why don't you call Bonnie Bessie? That was her project, that's her thing down there. She could give you...
So I'm asking her about this cul-de-sac up here?
That's correct, that's hers.
So we can look into that aspect.
That's, I wouldn't want you guys, it's not your responsibility, that's us.
I would also like from town council an interpretation of the split lot.
Oh, with this Lot 3, and, yeah, that's a good idea. There is part of it that is in TC, in the TC, so is that enough to consider it? I don't even know how to phrase that.
Now, there is regulations governing that.
With the reduced lot requirements.
Yes.
Well, in other words, he can't have where it's going to be open for business downstairs and he has to live upstairs?
Well, yeah, it's just, yeah, I'd like a ruling on that, because there is, I mean, to your point, there is part of that Lot 3 that is in the town center. Not a significant portion, but...
And I guess to step back, I know the original intent from our client is to split these into their individual lots. When looking at it, it appeared, I guess we didn't know about this warrant that came through. Prior to the warrant, if we looked at the zoning map, the way that the zoning map and the, the way that the zoning would be, the zoning line would be...
Interpreted?
Interpreted.
Yep.
I think we'd have a strong case that the zoning line would have went to the back of the slot. That being said, if the warrant says that the line is identified as 200 feet, as long as that's, if that's the governing legal document, then I guess, you know, that comes into play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, when we looked at that, we saw, you know, we can split these lots off, and there was enough available frontage on this road to create two more. So I guess we need to go back to, it sounds like we need to identify this road as existing prior zoning or not.
It most likely should be in for that entire lot, is my guess, correct? Somewhere in that deed, it should be called out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Actually, if I could just add something, it's not before zoning, it's before the enactment of subdivision regulations becoming effective in town, so that'll be 1954.
And in 1954...
That's BT.
The only thing I vaguely remember down there was strictly the Bigelow house.
Oh, yeah.
And it would all, it would also be helpful if you had that map with the 200-foot setback for the zoning district, if you could provide that to us, that'd be great, or some sketch.
Put it on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a sketch, so I can pass that along to them as well, so they can understand as much of this as possible.
To find this document, the one we were just discussing, that would be on the most recent town warrant, or was this 2010, you said?
This goes back to the 2010 warrant, you're telling me the actual...
And that was main town meeting in the spring, if I remember correct. I don't think we did that in the fall. I can't remember.
I can't remember, but I would assume it was spring.
Come on.
That's the first thing that came to my mind. To do in a town, zoning bylaws in the spring.
So currently, along this road, you got, it looks like a driveway coming onto this property, obviously an access for this property. I think the ultimate goal is to split these lots off, and if we have what we need for a third or fourth lot, we'd obviously be looking for that. So that's where we're at. So, what I need to get for you guys is our homework on the...
The deeds.
The right-of-way, yeah. The other thing I was going to ask, on that Lot 4, where is the driveway right now for that? Does that go out to the private way?
I believe it does. I don't, we don't show what you're doing.
No, that was, that was one of my questions I was looking at, and I can see where the driveways are here, because there's, there's the garage. But over here, I can't tell where...
Right.
Does it go back to the cul-de-sac, or does it come out on the private road?
I can show, I mean, here's a Google image. This is the house on the left side of the road, that's the access for this house that's along Maple Ave, and that's the access for this house that looks like it's covered in trees, but this home here...
So it goes out to the private?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, doesn't come up?
Oh, I can show you. This is, I guess, similar to this plan, that's the house on Maple here, this is this house here, and this, this house is this house here.
Yeah.
So it's coming in off somewhere here.
What does Google call that, Lewis Street? Is that what Google calls it?
That's what Google calls it.
Lewis Street, huh?
Looks like it calls the entire, the trailer park, or the trailer park as well.
Oh, so they call the entire...
The entirety.
Lewis Street. Yeah, okay.
Because they changed it.
So if Google says it, I would say that's probably law.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Negative on that one.
I want that...
Because I'm guessing, I'm guessing your locust map came from Rutland, what's got the Lantern Lane on it?
Yeah.
So, anyhow.
Well, I can remember being in Concom when we did that cul-de-sac, that's that far back.
I think there's two of them too, those things, a little one. Which, I'm guessing, if I'm doing my math, is that over 1,000 feet? Do I want to know that answer?
No, you don't.
Again...
At least it wouldn't be a damn, this road.
99.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, do we need to ask the applicant to extend the A and R?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Yeah, there's two things you're going to want to do, and one is to pick a meeting date. I can tell you that, this meeting date's on the 28th, although we may need more time to get a response from town council. You may need time also to research it.
Yeah, if we could schedule it for then, in worst case, we have to, if we could schedule it for then, in worst case, we push it off if we don't get an answer, I think.
Okay, well, the 28th is a possible day, the 14th of March, or 28th of March are the upcoming meeting dates.
I'll tell you, it'd be more comfortable, I think, with the 14th of March.
14th of March.
Yeah. Well, the town council, who knows?
Yeah, I understand.
And we're not going to send anything to them until we get something from, information from you guys on the...
Deed.
Deed, so, and again, maybe you get that tomorrow and we get it back, but still...
Yes.
Two weeks from our town council, I'm just going to give you my opinion that's pushing it.
Sometimes they're quick, sometimes they're not.
14th of March? Yes, 14th of March. 14th of March. And then we need to also extend the final action deadline from tonight until, can we do like the 21st of March, just give us enough time to deal with this administratively for you tonight? You all right?
Yeah.
Can you just check me on, I don't have a calendar, but can you just check me on, if that's Monday through Thursday, when the town hall's open?
On, in March?
Yeah, the 21st.
The 21st?
Yeah.
Of February?
March.
Of March. 21st is a Tuesday.
That would work. That's the, okay, that would work. So we're doing the first, on the top and then the third session.
So 14th and 24th, start the two dates?
So the 14th is the date, and then the 20th is the extension.
The 20th.
Yeah, final act, yeah.
Got you.
Thank you.
Now, can I sign off as representative of the applicant?
I believe, yes.
Okay.
You folks are representing Ames, so that's perfectly acceptable.
My signature's this day, 14th, right? Is that it?
And down there too.
Great, thank you.
Well, we get new things all the time.
What time did you have it to come back on the 14th?
We didn't set time, did we?
You don't need to set a time for it, it's an A and R, so it's not required. So is there a vote on these two?
Do we need to vote?
Yes, we need to vote. My vote would be to move to continue the public meeting until the 14th, from March 14th instead of the February 14th, and then extend the final action deadline from 214 to 321.
Okay, so extend it.
Second.
Okay, I'll buy that. Any discussion? In favor? Yeah, this, I have always had problems with that, understanding this whole thing.
Article 2, the bottom? See, I thought we, and again, you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, I thought that it was set up so if, to this picture, if this piece of property, some of it went into or outside of the TC 1, that it would go to the less restrictive zoning by law. Maybe I'm reading that wrong.
So on that, what that's showing is, this is, well, let's just call that TC 1 in this case.
Yeah.
And that's R 40.
Yeah.
The TC 1 line is shown there.
Right.
It says you can extend the less restrictive 30 feet...
Okay.
Onto the R 40, so if you wanted to put a structure a little closer that way, I think is...
You could go back to the boundary, is what it's basically saying. You don't get stuck in saying that the back portion of it's in R 40. Because the TC 1 is less restrictive than the R 40.
Right, you don't get to go to the boundary of the property line here, but you get to go...
No, but you get to go to the boundary of that, of the back property of this.
Right, so...
So a real skinny house.
The effect of TC 1 zone on this is 30 feet beyond the actual TC 1 zone.
Yeah, so it would pick up that back property, and you wouldn't have to be cutting it in half, so to speak. That was what I was thought we'd do in Norm, is that if we ran into this, that we'd actually extend TC 1, which is less restricted, to take the whole property and not leave a little section off. So if they wanted to build a house in the back here, they could take advantage of TC 1 by crossing over into the R 40 zone. That's what I thought we were trying to give quarter to anybody that ran into that situation when we did the bylaw. But in this case, it's sort of the opposite. A majority of the property is in the R 40 zone, not the TC 1, so that's why I'm a, I'm at, I'm at particular one, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, let the attorney tell us that, but my gut is, is that it's going to be R 40, so there'll be a different, but again, that's what we paid attorney to tell us. I think that was our intent when we did it. I remember we were trying, because there were, that example we gave, there were more than a couple of them that were in. We couldn't exactly, you know. So we picked 200, ran it down there, and then put that section in there to cover it. So we picked two hundred, ran it down there, then put that section in there to cover anything that we ran into. As I remember us talking about that when we were in, in the subcommittee.
Well, this is the, um, not that it matters.
Sidewalk.
That thing there isn't called out on that.
Yes.
Description on, on that one. It's not called out here, is it? I mean, this is, this whole thing is TC, TC one.
TC one.
But it wasn't called out on the.
I think it defined for TC one.
Oh, yeah.
It shows the line over.
That was.
And that was what we called TC one, TC two, and I also did the Village Center.
Village Center, yeah. Cause we did the same type of thing with Village Center. We had any little bumps in the road there too. Cause again, I remember Dave Lucy said, well, I've got property that's over twenty or thirty feet and that's why, well, we can fix that.
Typo slash deletion, but.
I shouldn't say Dave. Dave was, um.
That's where things seem funky in our office.
Dave, haven't brained at.
But you were able to verify that this line is split some of this. Until now, I didn't know where that document came from and wasn't sure if it was part of what we needed to follow. Sounds like it is.
Yeah.
But now that we see that, we should be able to put that on this plan. All right, perfect. I appreciate these, that information for us.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent.
I will stick around, but I guess we postpone the next meeting.
Yeah. Let's see. Oh, okay, we passed six forty-five, so we can do the. We can do Hilltop. So accept the motion to continue Hilltop Public Hearing to?
The twenty-eighth?
I, I guess I will, um, ask if there's a motion to, uh, continue the public hearing on Hilltop Estates. Do there's more information that needs to be reviewed and commented on until the twenty-eighth of February at six forty-five P M.
Since we're doing this, I think we'd also ask for another extension of the constructive action deadline from seven-three until seven-seventeen?
Yeah.
Just to.
So moved, or so ask for a move.
Second. Or a motion, you asked for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I make such a motion.
There's only three of us, so I need to second from you.
I mean, as Dave said, I, I could, I made as chairman.
Oh, okay. Excellent, then I'll shut up and let you handle this. I'm good.
Cause we're not, we're not doing any findings or.
No, it's administrative purely.
Oh, cool, then I'll shut up. I thought I had to jump in the middle of this. Then I'll second it.
Okay, you made the motion, seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I am no longer involved in this. I will not get involved in this, period. I feel that there were too many, um, oh, God, it light. Wavers that are being asked for this project. I will not.
I would ask.
You can ask.
That stay involved, but the comments you're making now, when we open this up, that those are primary comments that you make, cause I think they're valuable. I think they're important and I think they need to be stated.
They have been in the minutes, basically, when I've gone through them, so.
But since we're putting a new, since they're coming back with comments and we're still in the.
No, I, I feel that Mr. Blair needs to get his act together and if he wants to continue, that's his project, but, uh, as far as I'm concerned. I'm tired of, I'm tired of everything. Every time we turn around.
I get it.
We change it. We change this, we change that. And to me, for crying out loud, you, you're digging up the hill. What are you doing with the water? You're getting it to flow downhill faster. Then you notice everybody else in the neighborhood, it's gonna get more water, more, everything else that's going on, for what?
Yeah.
Just the idea of trying to get some houses up a hill. I feel that, like I said, he should, he should look into and, and maybe another alternative to get into this.
Remember he asked us a few meetings ago if, if the board's opinion, and I think we did a straw vote, that we could continue if they made changes. Is this maybe the time to tell him that the board feels that this is an untenable plan? And so we don't waste his time, is I guess what I'm getting at. I, I don't know. I don't know if this is the time to do that, cause I hate to waste people's time if ultimately this is gonna be a no. Cause is this a special permit? Am I right?
No.
Just a standard.
Some subdivision approval.
Okay.
Uh.
I guess.
I'm almost a little bit, a little bit leery of the legality.
Well, that's, that's my fear right now too, is telling them no without actually going through the motions.
That's just good. I, I, I do think it needs to be, y, y, you know, you know, brought to an end to where, uh, Mr. Blair can't offer anything better.
And we can't, and we can't move forward from the board.
And we decide.
That's why we'd like you to stay on, so you give your opinion and say no.
He's already done it. He's already brought it to.
But I'd like you to be on, so when, when we sit down and say, listen, we're gonna close the hearing and make the vote and the vote is, I mean, when we vote, know your opinion. I've got mine, Marilyn, you'll have yours. And then, um, we can pass that opinion with the vote on to Mr. Blair and let him, that way, like you said, Norm, legally, we've done what we need to do from the board's perspective. That's why we really like you to stay and handle that vote.
Yeah, I would really like you to stay.
And Marilyn does too. That's two of us. So as a vote, you're outvoted two to one. Come on, Dick. I, 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 in some aspects, again, I don't wanna discuss my opinion, but I have a real hard time with, with any, any subdivision coming into the planning board with so many exceptions. I just, to me, it takes our subdivision bylaw and just does this out the window. I have a hard time doing that. We wrote a bylaw, I'm sorry, a regulation to, um, try to make sure Rutland subdivisions were developed and built correctly. And a waiver of a huge majority, if it doesn't make sense to me, and it sort of does this to the, to the regulation. That's my opinion.
And to the neighbors.
Yeah, so anyhow. I just was, I just don't, I hate a developer to just keep going and going when the board's sort of getting to a point where we're. So anyhow, I, but I think you're right. We need to.
Approximately, approximately, how much money have we spent? And we had to collect from him to pay our bills.
Oh, we've put, Dave's put a lot of time into this. I know that. We've used a lot of staff time.
So has in our engineer.
Yeah.
Well, we, we have some money from him.
Yeah, we didn't, the board made a decision not to collect the entire fee.
Yeah.
We collected some smaller amount based upon roadway friends or some other alternative. So you don't have the whole.
No, we, we, we don't have the whole subdivision fee, but do you have any recollection at all?
I wanna say it was around six thousand dollars that we collected.
That sounds about right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds close.
How much do you think we've spent of that?
Quinn's cheap, so I don't think a lot.
Yeah. I don't think we've gone to six thousand dollars.
No, we, we haven't. I'd say probably in the two thousand dollar range, somewhere around there.
Two grand? And again, from the perspective of developer, still has the special permits for all of the properties to be built as.
As state lots.
As state lots, so that, that's still on the table and legal to do. So anyhow, okay. That's all I got to say.
I don't think that the, the money that's been spent is, is basically what he's spent through us, correct?
That's the money that he gave us to spend for engineering.
I'm just saying, a lot of time, and he keeps on, you know, going back to the engineer.
Well, this, this last one that I read.
To me, for crying out loud, it's time. Not only for the engineer, but for us to be involved in this.
Well, I think Carl's done, from what I read from the supplement that Dave sent this morning, I think it was this morning. There's a lot of exceptions in there and I just, I was struggling with it, so. They, I, that's why I was like, oh, this meeting's gonna be tough tonight, cause there's. But then I saw there were more questions that came up that weren't answered, so I'm glad we, we, it's working out the way it is, so. Anyhow, I don't want to, I don't wanna get into a discussion, cause we really should.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion to continue in a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'll hang tight.
Yes.
Okay.
But.
Digging your heels.
Oh, no, I don't. My leg hurts enough.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Here we go again.
I value your opinion, man. I just didn't need it.
Yeah, I just think we need to do it right.
All right. I saw Price Lemon in here. I figured it was that.
Yeah, that's a whole nother.
Yeah, when we get to that, I gotta ask some questions, cause I didn't get down there. I did try, I did try going through Brittenell Estate, but that, that front over there sort of stopped me from driving any farther. Yeah, I'm not going through that front over there.
Okay.
It's pretty thick, Norm.
Yeah, I know. Okay, Price Lemon. Okay. Uh, so, uh, Price Lemon Estates, we do have a report from January thirtieth.
In phase three, Norm, the, the last three bullets in their report is giving me pause to what we went through in phase two with, with water.
Yeah.
So that's, I wanted to bring it up to the board. I'm like, oh, I don't wanna go through this again with, somebody buys a house and we got water out front.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know how to.
The other thing is, everything is, is still only been rough graded.
Yeah.
It's only binder. I don't think there's a full burn, uh, you know, on the edge of the road. The drainage is probably not completely employed at this point.
So why are we having them occupying the houses? If the, if the road is, and to me, for crying out loud, especially where he says that there are spots in here that have been patched and whatever. It gets, gets to the back in my mind, how bad is it underneath? Really, for crying out loud, especially when you got water running as much as possible right there.
This is what bothered me here.
That's there, it's possible.
This, this gave me the, the same thing that when you and I walked that one time with the water on, on phase two.
Yeah.
It, it was looking the same type of thing like this right here. And I was like, again, we really haven't had the snow, I mean, we've had a lot of rain, don't get me wrong, but. I just, I look at that and I go, ah, don't tell me we're gonna get the same runoff right at that corner like we did off of that cul-de-sac that came down through the strip road. So, and again, Norm's got a good point. Maybe it's without the berms being there that it's not being directed correctly, but.
But I mean, you know, a standard procedure is that, you know, when binder is, is in.
Yeah.
You can start building it, yes.
You can start building. And I, I would, I would not want to back away from that. Because with all of the trucks and everything coming in on a finished road, that's just a lot of wear and tear on what's in it.
It's a lot of wear and tear in this.
Yeah.
And in my opinion, for crying out loud, if I start going up there and see a lot of cracks in this thing, and then tear it all up and start from scratch.
Same thing as Bear Hill.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's. If that's what will be needed, then it will be needed.
And that'll come before, that would be part of our inspection before we would send this to the select board for.
Oh, yeah.
Approval, so that would be, Dick, I think, remember the ninety-nine difference?
Well, I know, but I'm trying to stay ahead of the curve here.
Yeah. I just didn't like those, those last three bullets and then when I saw the picture, I was just like, ah, this is having reminiscent pictures of phase two. And again, I.
I don't think that's the same thing, though.
No, no, but this time, i- instead of coming off the hill and going down the property, it actually found the road and pooling at the bottom. So.
And on the last page, right there, about the sewer, is that for the houses that are occupied testing?
Oh, I didn't even see that one. Oh, good for you. I missed that.
To me, for crying out loud, you know, if you haven't got the test results and that people are living in there and you, oh, you have, you got a bad one here or something, you know.
I, I would really, and again, this is my opinion, that last bullet, I'd really want an opinion from Joe. I mean, is this something unique, unique, cause from the board's perspective, I would send that last bullet to Joe and say, what's your opinion? Do you want this as for record? Cause if, if, if the answer's yes, we need to get that.
To me, for crying, that should have been answered before they had an occupancy permit to go into these houses. Your sewer system should be.
Working.
Working.
Yeah.
I, I think.
Water and sewer should be operational.
I think this maybe calls for a letter to Blair.
Yeah. I, I agree with that one.
Calls for a letter to Blair. We want the sewer test results immediately.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah. I think that's a fair ask. And I just, when we sent that letter out, I'd copy Joe on it, just to make sure he's in the loop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
All we got.
Anything else on Price Lemon?
Oh.
And he hasn't, he's, uh, doesn't sound like he's really gonna get started on any of the other phases.
I haven't been over there. He had said that he was going to.
The connector phase was next, right? It's phase four?
No, he was gonna do that little cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Off the bottom end.
Lemon, the lemon drive, whatever it is.
I really, again, I can't tell him how to do it, but I really like that thing connected. We.
True. I think we're, we all do.
Yeah, anyhow, I can't, can't tell him to do that, but I, I know the fire chief had, had leaned on me a few times that he really wants that connected as soon as possible, so he's got two egresses to that subdivision. Anyhow.
I, I don't know, like I say, considering that he, phase three is as good as built out and that little lemon circle is only a little chunk.
Yeah.
I, I, I would almost bet that this spring, he's gonna be working on both of those.
Okay. I'm fine with that. I was gonna ask Tamika, did all that stuff get filed for phase one and two, do you know? When I say filed, didn't we have to file something with the state?
Yes, yep. Uh, no, not for that. Are you talking about street acceptance?
Yes.
That doesn't get filed with the state, but that documentation is all completed.
Okay. Who's it?
It gets recorded with the registry of deeds.
Oh, okay.
It was a grant of easements.
Okay, great, thanks. I just wanted, I wanted to make sure this time all of our paperwork got through.
Yeah, I'd be very good sure of that.
Thank you.
It's not our paperwork, it's their paperwork.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted to.
Okay, next, Brittenell Estates, and we do have a report there. I went up and, well, just to kind of fill you in, Blair did ask for, uh, release of a second house.
Another one?
Yeah.
Sometime in the spring, when we get the second, and we get the finished boat put on the road.
And, uh.
This is the.
Very simply, he has completed a passable passage out to Brittenell Drive over the two Wetland crossings. Actually, he's done a very, very nice job, uh, when you come right down to it. He did, he still does not have the second crossing paved, but he brought it to grade and he put ground asphalt on top of the whole thing. So actually, that, what is that, Bear Farm Drive? Is that what it's called, I think?
Yeah, I believe so.
Uh, is in better shape than Brittenell Drive is, which isn't saying much.
Well, I would suggest that, um, no, until we get. Well, I would suggest that, um, no, until we get the, um, on, on Page Two of Three of the Quinn Engineering Report, down there with certification for mass registry, structural engineer must be provided. I, before we have traffic going over that,
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I want that-
That was part of my requirement for that first house agreement. He was supposed to, Dave, get you documentation that, um, I apologize, I can't remember the gentleman's name now, it's alluded, Mike Maroney?
Yeah.
Was supposed to get you documentation that all the structural, the second crossing was approved and he'd reviewed it. Have you, had you ever gotten that documentation?
Yes, I was circulated to the board.
I must have missed it.
For its acting individually to allow the waiver of that condition for that lot. You received that correspondence with the stamps
Okay.
indicating that inspections were up to date.
Okay.
Yet by the structural engineer.
And putting it bluntly, I gave the okay to release that second house.
So you say we, we do have a stamped engineer, engineer plan on that crossing, on both crossings?
A letter from the structural engineer indicating that the inspections are up to date.
That's what I was asking for, to give him the first one, 'cause I wanted Mike out there to say that, yes, he agrees that what was put in is what structurally should have been put in. But to your point, Dick, I don't know, do we have the plans for that second crossing? 'Cause I, I don't remember ever seeing any plans for it.
I'd have to check on that.
Okay.
So this is the same, um, situation, whatever, the, uh, how the tax rate on the house, uh, you know, the mortgage would go up, is that the right?
I'm assuming so. I don't know, I don't know. Uh, that part, we didn't, we didn't go into details. The thing is, neither of the crossings is complete.
I know.
So you're not gonna get a final
Final.
uh, write-off from the engineer.
No, no, no.
Because, you know, the still is still-
That's up to date, I would think.
I guess what I'm asking for, Norm, is I don't think in the plans, we have the engineered drawings for that second crossing. Because the last time I looked at, we had, we had the first one, we finally got, Mike got us that one.
I know we got the first one, and I, and somehow I do, I do think I remember getting the second ones.
Okay.
But I'm not, I won't guarantee that.
If we could check on that, if we have those and that's what Mike's inspecting against, then I'm good. It's just, when we did the, when we did the last review of the plans, all we had was the first crossings engineered. We didn't have the second. And Clee and Julian said they were gonna talk to Mike and get those plans to us when they were finished. I have never, I personally have never seen them. If they've come in, shame on me, I missed them, but I'd really like to see those as part of the total plan package. And if we've got them, great, I'm good. But if we don't, I'm gonna have a big problem, because we're building something with no plans to verify it.
Well, what makes me nervous is something happens, is the town held responsible, because we goofed up not having it.
That's why I'd like to have the plans in, in hand. And more than anything, as part of a document, so in five years, when something might happen, Joe or, or his predecessor would have plans to hand to an engineer to repair it, knowing what they have to get into. That's all. It's, it's, it's what I'm dealing with at my company. I want as-built drawings, so somebody can repair it, fix it, or do something with it in the future. So, that's it.
Anyway, can you check on those?
Yeah.
The plans for the second crossing? Like I say, I kinda think we did. And I know we won't round and round on that.
Norm is, is, and is, are we waiting on comments? Or, 'cause I know this letter says February 3rd, so it's relatively new. Is Clee or needs gonna comment on some of these outstanding items? Should we ask them to comment on them? I mean, I see sewer-related revisions have reviewed, some of the outstanding comments have not been resolved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Things like that?
That's, that's, that's on that cul-de-sac that he has started work on.
Okay. I mean, there's compact testing and stuff like that, um... It says obligation of other permits, right? Some are unclear, however, now that portion of... I, I don't know, it's just some of this stuff that, that Carl's put in here, I'm like, yeah, yeah, this seems like a partial, and I get it. But I'd really like to get comments back from the developer on this. Even if they, even if he says, uh, testing will be done May, in May for this, just something to tell us.
So... Anyway, well, do we wanna send a note off to Clee, uh, on the particular bullets that we're interested in?
Well, since-
You know, you know, some of these subdrain struggling recommended, you know, he knows that. And it's, it's been in this report forever, on Brittenell Estates. But for stuff that has, you know, apparently been done, like the third bullet, compaction testing.
Yeah.
The fourth bullet, compaction testing, um... Okay, we know the engineer reports supposedly are up to date?
Well, he's saying on Number Two, surface water from paved road should be controlled prior to house construction sales. So, I don't know. I mean, one, Bullet One, you know, that's, that's part of our conditions, he's got it fixed, I'm not worried about that. But Two, Three, Four, um, Five is, that's nothing, I mean, we got a model, that's not-
The thing is, this thing is still all under covenant, so he can't start building yet.
But he's putting houses in there, isn't he?
Not on Brittenell.
Not Brittenell.
Oh, I'm sorry. What am I?
He has put up lot numbers.
Okay. And see, what bullet is that? Two, Six Bullet says, "All retaining walls and arch culvert construction must be observed and certified as per design plan." So we've got the design plan, and I'm good for that, but that's, again, we've already talked about that. And then like the bullet with the sewers, is there any updated plans? If so, the planning board really needs to get those and-
I'll, I'll bet they're not doing anything on that.
Okay. Just that.
Uh, sewer testing results, the bottom
Yeah.
Bottom one.
That needs to be done.
Yeah.
That's it. So, I mean, there's probably three or four of these that he needs to comment on?
About three, four, and the bottom one on the page, and then, yeah, that's the end of it.
Yeah.
Are you saying in relation to the second house, or are you just-
No, this is, this is Brittenell Estates.
The whole, yeah, yeah, Marilyn, I basically want the whole, I want the subdivision.
Yeah.
'Cause, um-
I got you.
'Cause in for a penny, in for a pound is what I'm getting the feeling for, so...
No, yeah, I, I have no problem with what you're saying.
That's it.
Okay, that's it for Brittenell.
Well, there's another. What's?
Whoops, there's a second, a second.
Yeah, I just saw that, I missed that.
The second Brittenell.
This is the, the first crossing. Holy, Jamal, I missed this one.
Well, I realize this is two weeks later.
Yeah.
But that fifth bullet down, the concrete head wall,
Yeah.
it's definitely been bored.
Okay. I mean, this thing is two weeks old. Should, should, I'm asking the board this, I'm not sure, should we send a letter to, um, Carl and say, "I know this is two weeks old, but could you take a relook, use this as your basis and update your report to us for the first part?" I don't know, maybe I'm on-
These pictures.
Some of them are actually of the second portion, right?
See, this.
This is the first head wall, right?
This is, yeah, this is, that, these are the first crossing.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. This is the first crossing.
The top one's the second.
Is the second crossing.
Yeah. And he's made major strides with the second crossing compared to-
Like I say, I don't, I'm not understanding this. Okay, that's the first crossing.
Oh, and then this picture is looking from Brittenell Drive across the second crossing.
No.
No?
No.
I'm wrong there, okay.
This, well, this is looking, this picture is looking from Brittenell to the second crossing.
Oh.
That's the first crossing.
Okay.
But even from these pictures, I don't see, I don't understand his comment. Uh, this.
Concrete, yeah.
Because you can see it
It's poured, yeah.
here and here. They're definitely there. Now, I know on-
This would be a good question. If Carl was here, we could ask.
Yeah.
I'm guessing right now.
You know, unless he, he is talking like, see, on this first crossing, okay, there's the, the poured concrete, but then there are also some blocks on top.
Yeah.
And on this one, there are no blocks on top of the poured, like-
Yeah.
I don't know.
Do we ask Carl? Maybe, you know, I know he's been doing these two weeks apart, and since Clee's basically, he's considered he's done, do we have him just do a, sort of a, a winter walkthrough for us for, I, I don't know, I don't know what I'm asking.
Completely done, 'cause the top coat-
Yeah.
The top coat is not, the guardrails, the blocks on the Wetland crossings, the guardrails, the fences.
I guess what I'm asking, should we ask Carl, is the report from the 14th overriding the 30th, is what I'm trying to get at? That's, that's my curiosity, because the, if, if we look back at the 30th and we look at the 14th, it's almost like a completely different report.
Yeah.
So that's one thing I'd like to know, is if the 30th, if, if we could just shoot him an email, maybe, Carl, is the 14th the latest report? And does it override the 30th? Can we ignore the 30th? That'd make me feel a whole lot better.
Okay, I'll buy that. Yep. Okay. Okay. Let me see, Brittenell Estates, Bear Hill Two, uh, we do have something from Quinn, which says nothing.
I've got something for Bear Hill Two, I just wanted to report to the board. I had, um, one and two, I called Norm on this, I had one and then a second neighbor of mine call up and ask me about, there was, they called it a sterling truck, a dump truck, was dumping large boulder rocks onto property or a house lot that was facing Palmagussit on Bear Hill. So if you've got the circle of Arrowhead, there's, there's, uh, house lots that they back up to, or their, their back of their property actually overlooks Palmagussit. And there was trucks dumping large boulders there. And the concern from the two people was, is that if some of those boulders cut loose, they're coming down, they're coming down the hill in, A, into their house, and B, onto Palmagussit. And was there any remediation for that? I, I, I told both of them, I said, "I'll ask the questions, but the planning board doesn't really have any authority over house building. We're concerned about roads and subdivision, subdivision regulations." So I called Norm and asked him, "What should I do?" And the answer was, "Just give Joe a call, let him know about it, and then talk to Dave McCray and let Dave handle it." That's what I did. So, um, Dave called me back, I left him a message, he said he was gonna go look at it. Joe said, "Thanks, I will check with Tom Larson about that," and I haven't heard back. So I presume they handled it. But I just wanna tell the board that that was something that was asked of me.
On top of Bear Hill Two.
Bear Hill, say, say you're going around Arrowhead, and you're, you've come off the new, I don't even remember the, the road, Arrow, the road where Helly's property was, that road there.
Okay.
If you go down that and you're looking towards Brittenell, on the left, there's house lots there to be built.
Yeah.
Well, they slope off down
Yeah.
quote Bear Hill, and a lot of the trees have been taken out. And Mr. Frost and the neighbor across from him had asked me about, they saw a dump truck was coming up and dumping large rocks. I'm guessing to help put fill in or, or fill up the property, so they could put a foundation in. I get, I don't know, I'm not a builder. And they were worried that if those, some of those large rocks, not little, I mean,
Yeah.
would cut loose, boulders would cut loose and come down Palmagussit. The repercussions is, one's gonna go into the gentleman's house, and the other one's gonna come across the street and go into Mark's front living room. Or from the standpoint of, Mark had said, "What if one cuts loose and there's a car gone by?"
Yeah.
That's why I said, "All right, I will, I will take it up to-"
I can see your, your viewpoint. In the back of my mind, are they trying to make more, or try to bring the foundation out further?
I admire you.
That's why, so I didn't wanna get too much involved, because I'm not a builder. So I called Norm, and he gave me a good advice on who to talk to, so I talked to, uh, Joe, let him know about it from the standpoint of the road on Palmagussit. And Dave McCray from the standpoint of the building permit.
Building inspector.
And I got out of it after that, I didn't want any more to do with it.
Yeah.
Turn them loose, so-
I'd be very leery, especially, uh, on top of that hill, holy crap, oh.
I've, I've been outside working on the tractor and looked up and saw that excavator, and like, that's a lot of vehicle coming down the side of that hill.
Yeah.
But again, I'm not worried about it anyhow. So I just wanna tell the board I did do that.
Have we seen any? We wouldn't see anything, because it's already an approved subdivision. Lots are all approved and everything else, so it's nothing that'll become before us anyways.
Nope.
All right, keep an eye on it, that's all.
Yeah.
But you're absolutely right. Uh...
It, it could happen.
Doggone right, and, and putting it in with this kind of a year, not frozen and things like that.
And a lot of mud and water.
Mud and water, correct?
All I keep thinking of is George Jones's truck.
Oh, sliding onto Brittenell?
Yeah.
Right, right over Brittenell Drive and into the woods below.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, decision, uh, for 219 to 223, uh, Palmagussit. I don't think we have copies of it here, but Dave did send it out online. I know I took a look at it, and it looked good to me.
So it's, um, can you, Dick and Marilyn, would you sign this?
Yeah, I can't sign it, it wasn't signed.
Do I have a motion to, uh, sign the site plan review decision?
Other, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Uh, Marilyn. And once again, item nine, the Barry Paxton Road decision. Again, Dave sent it out- Oh, whoops, sorry about that, skipped that. Uh-
Remember seeing that one? That the woman was here-
Yeah.
About meter and whatever, and-
Oh, yeah. I don't remember reading that one, though.
Circulated it, uh, early in the week, uh, yesterday.
Oh, yeah?
Or, or Friday, even.
Oh, okay, okay.
The first one of this group of circulated was, was, uh, fifty-two paddock?
Okay, and that was Friday?
I believe so.
Yeah.
I have a copy, if you wanna look, I have the file here. You wanna go through any documentation?
Yeah, I'll just take a quick glance at it.
Okay, um, so this one, all, all four of you can sign this. Have you taken action on it?
Okay, this is, let's see. So this is the accessory drawing that already exists.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else wanna look at this?
It just was, we didn't add anything extra in that one, we just did the boilerplate, if I remember right.
Yeah, just that, they do have to get any other permits that are necessary.
Yeah.
And that's in there.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, now, motion to sign that decision, special permit decision for the accessory dwelling unit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 She was funny, oh, man, that was a-
Yeah.
Do you know, do you know you're on camera?
And now we have the Barry Paxton Road.
And all four of you can sign this one.
How heavy put a one there, it's the 14th?
Oh. So, do I have a motion to sign the special permit decision for 175 Barry Paxton Road for auto sales?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this one? I'm just, I guess, my, my, my only kinda comment is, is there's some language in there about, kinda making the place look presentable-
Yeah.
-so to speak. Uh, I, I guess what's bothering me, probably more than anything, is that trailer, that was at the back of the property, that apparently is gonna be their office. Uh, I don't know, maybe they can dress it up and make it look better, but it's, it's pretty-
Maybe they'll sell enough cars, they'll build a whole new complex.
Well, maybe, maybe, but anyway.
One good only hope.
And I did like the comment about, uh, they have to get rid of the tires.
I thought that was a condition from last night.
Yeah.
Add that to it.
Well, that's hazardous waste, so I would say that would be a good comment to have in there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we move over to that?
Not yet.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
There is that one.
Yes.
And that one.
Okay. Looking at clock.
Yes.
I'm looking at schedule.
Yep.
And the happy dance is really happening.
Yes.
That's it?
Almost.
Things that haven't been anticipated that need to be talked about, correct?
No, I just, just wanted to, I know it, it said board and other things when Tameka sent it, but I just wanted to, for us few people to know that I put Ronnie Mash's, I'd like to have Ronnie Mash either, um, into the, uh, town report-
Thank you.
For Memorial, for Amor, uh, Moss, or, is it Moss?
Moses, Moses Howe.
Moses.
Moses Howe.
Oh, I thought it was always Moss Howe.
See, I did the same thing, but I put Mr., uh-
Ken Love.
Ken Love, thanks, she knew it, because I put my name on it. Kenny's done so much for the town. Selectman and Ken, and, uh, I think he, he would be a good person for, uh, what's that?
Did he pass?
No, 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 he's just-
Okay.
Pretty bad shape, but, uh-
Oh, Jesus.
He's done so much, I mean, he's been the champion for restoring the old fire station-
Yeah.
-and making that happen, and which is, I would say, right now, probably eighty percent, eighty-five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, been a selectman, been on the brigade, kept money going in the towns, volunteered for so much, and, uh-
Led the way for me to, and my wife to use the auto, uh, the auto train, you know-
Okay.
Try it once.
I just-
From Florida.
I just think he's a good example of Moses Howe.
I can't convince my wife to do it again, though.
Yeah, well, your uncle had the same experience.
Well, is there any other business to come before the board? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I am trying like crazy to get the forward. I don't know if we're gonna be able to make it or not, but I'm gonna do my best.
Aye, it's warmer up here than it is in Florida.
Yeah, but my brother's in Florida, and I wanna go see him, so, um, I will try like crazy. I have such an old computer.
Dick, what do you need? I do Jordan's computer services, just tell me what you need, and I can make it happen. Yeah, I, I take care of Randy. Ask him for his turkey sales, where the, all those laptops came to be able to do the sales from, you know. That would be my office, that I didn't need anymore, that I just said, here, I'll get them set up, here's three computers, you can use it three different locations, tie them together on your network, and you can sell turkeys.
Wow.
So, I donated them, I guess is the best way to say it, so, if you need something, Dick, I can, tell me what you need.
The less computers, the better, happier I am.
Well, that's what I did with Randy for his house, when I said, we're not gonna put a lot of software on here, we're just gonna put what you need, Microsoft Office, Adobe Acrobat, and a way to get on the internet, and email, that's it.
Yeah.
No more.
About all you need.
Yeah, I-
For most people.
And I didn't even make it complicated, because I knew they need Excel for spreadsheets, Word, and I put PowerPoint in case they gotta do any presentations for the farm. That's it.
Yeah.
Nothing else. No publisher, no, uh, uh, one, one, any notes or anything like that.
No games?
No, well, the kids, the kids have been adding the games, which is where the viruses come from. Thank God for McAfee.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.